They, sorry. We just think about all the things that they do within the Student Services Program for our students, day in and day out. They really help our students reach their full potential through their commitment to help them explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents to figure out what they want to do in their futures. And those counselors that we would like to thank here are Amanda Jensen, Brett Eichen, Courtney Dummer, Erica Colmeyer, Gwen Allen, Haley Lamprick, Hannah Nickam, Heather Franzini, Heather Retclaff, Jen Dingar Hansen, Kelly Cornet, and Lindsay Sipes. So, thank you to all of them for all their hard work.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to reports and discussion. Item 9.1, Executive Director of Finance and Operations Julie Holman. Will be joined by Eric Case of PMA to present the resolution awarding the sale of $24,750,000 in General Obligation Funds Series 2025 for school facility improvement projects. This item will appear on tonight's consent agenda.
All right, good evening. As presented two weeks ago, today was the sale of the final and third issue of the 2022 Capital Referendum. And so, the sale of the $24.75 million bonds occurred this morning. And Eric has joined us here to share how that went today and to let you know how many bids and who we would recommend or who is the winner of today's sale. So, I will let him take over.
Thank you. A pleasure to see everybody again. Eric Case, Director of Public Finance from PMA. Kind of talked a little bit more in depth about this slide last time I presented a few weeks ago, so I'm not going to talk about it too much. But this is a 20-year history of kind of how we track interest rates in the municipal market for tax-exempt debt, which you are considering here this evening. If you go to the next slide as I showed last time, just one thing to highlight here. So, this is showing from January of '24, so a little bit easier to see the trend in interest rates. But you'll notice more recently, there's been a downtick, which is evidenced in the final interest rates that beat our original. And we're very happy with the results. We can see the winner is B-OK. The recommendation for the winner is BOK Financial Securities at 4.02% rounded interest rate. And the other thing I would highlight on this slide is the number of bids that were received. So, a total of nine bids were received. And on average, we normally get between three and six. So, I think that speaks to the credit quality, all of the hard work that Julie did on behalf of the school district to secure all the data and information needed for marketing the debt, as well as the time she did to prepare and execute the rating call. So, I'll talk a little bit about the rating in brief when we talk about, show the final results and specifics of it. But there was a lot of work that went into that. And I think nine bidders is a good data point to understand how the marketplace really views the credit quality of the district. Getting into the next, a lot of numbers here, but this is the final sale from the $74.75 million Capital Referendum. On the far left, there is a little bit of outstanding debt that is evidence there, which will be retired in 2029, 2030. We did issue two initial issuances of $50 million in total back in February of 2023. And again, the $24.75 for your consideration this evening is the final piece of debt related to the construction projects from the referendum. Going to the far right, really what we're targeting here is trying to provide what we call a flat levy. So, you'll see it starts at $6.8 million, a little bit higher than that. And then, there is a natural drop five years later where the levy required to retire the principal and interest associated with debt service drops. That's strictly correlated to the retirement of debt I spoke about earlier on the far left. But that was planned for, for future consideration from a tax perspective for the future boards and administration. Getting to the next slide, the specifics. So, again, this is for $24.75 of GO School Facility Improvement Bonds Series 25, the last issuance from the November 2022 referendum. So, the sale date is today. Like I talked about, we did receive those bids. The closing date is about three weeks from now. It takes a period of time for the attorneys to push paperwork around and certify that it's tax exempt. So, funds will be deposited on February 18th, 2025. The maturities, as shown on the prior slide, will start in April or the principal payments, April 1 of '26. And the debt will be retired unless it's paid off early in 2044. The first interest payment will be this fall, but that was contemplated with the levy this last fall. So, that is planned for. And then, an important feature to recognize is all principal after 2033 will be callable. And that provides flexibility for future boards to either refinance if interest rates are lower, but also pay down debt early without penalty at that point in time. So, again, saving long-term interest. I did highlight this, but the district did receive a stable credit rating of AA2. That's the same as prior issuances of debt. And the outlook is very stable for the school district. So, again, credit to Julie and the work that she put in for that. And then, the final interest rate is 4.02%, as I highlighted on that prior slide. So, with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, no questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item 9.2. Julie Holman will present the Shepherd of the Hills parcel detachment from the school district of Holman. This item will appear on the February 10 consent agenda.
Okay, you did receive in your packet a number of pieces that apply to this petition to detach a parcel. This has to do with the Shepherd of the Hills church location in the city of Onalaska. It's at the intersection of Highway 53 and Sand Lake Road. And they currently have two parcels, one of which is City of Onalaska, School District of Onalaska. And the other one is City of Onalaska, School District of Holman. So, if you're familiar with that church property, there's a smaller triangle parcel that is actually a separate parcel that they received through an exchange with the Menards property back, I think, in 2005. But it is a School District of Holman parcel as far as if there was a house on the property and any children in the house, they would be, resident district would be Holman. So, I received contact probably about six months ago initially regarding this inquiry. And then, that was from the School District of Onalaska, my counterpart over there, because she had been contacted from Shepherd of the Hills with some interest in this. They would like to combine the parcels, which means they'd like to detach from the School District of Holman and attach to the School District of Onalaska with the intent to actually combine their two parcels into one. And the reason that this is coming up is they had some interest in adding some more visible, I believe, electronic signage. And they could not get the approval on the county survey approval to do so without having the parcels combined or within the same school district and municipality. And so, they were looking at doing it for that purpose as well as possible future expansion. I'm sure I'm not fully explaining what the survey results were for this request, but it would be in their best interest in order to move forward to erect different signage or to actually expand if their parcels were combined into one total parcel, which would be a process through the county. In the meantime, they need approval by both the School District of Onalaska and the School District of Holman by March 1st for this to be effective for the church and the parcel change by July 1st. So, both school boards have to approve. And then, we would be filing that approval with DPI and possibly the county. I'm not for sure of the two areas. It's on the, on the instructions. This is new to me, a detachment of parcel. But the most important thing for you to consider tonight and when you act on it, on the consent agenda next meeting, is that because it's a church, there is no tax revenue for the School District of Holman. You know, it's a zero property value. And it also does not have a house on it or children, students. And would be considered possibly, you know, because they're going to combine the parcel, it's going to remain a church property. That's their intention. So, in other situations, you might consider, well, could there be a house on it? Could we lose enrollment because of it? It sits very much in like the city of Onalaska. And there are, there is no building on this parcel. And they don't have any intention of selling it. They'd like to combine it and make it one piece of property for their future purposes. So, the request and the petition from the church is that they are allowed to detach that parcel from School District of Holman. And that will be on the consent next meeting. Any questions?
Any questions?
I think I have a question. This is obviously also new to me. So, when you say detach, so it's just the land that is owned by the church? So, there, it's not, so it would really just like move our lines?
Nope, there's no land, there's no movement. It's detaching from the school district.
Okay.
And attaching.
Property.
To the School District of Onalaska.
Okay.
And then, they can move forward and actually request that the parcels be combined. They are adjacent.
Okay.
They're just two separate parcels in the county land records. And one happens to be Holman School District and one is Onalaska School District. So.
So, then our line would just like.
Okay, so it wouldn't affect.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 9.3. Julie Holman will also present the preliminary budget input variables for the 2025-26 budget. This item is for report only and will not appear on a consent agenda.
So, this evening, I will be presenting the budget variables that are, that we use to forecast the next five years of budget within our forecasting model. And this is a report that comes to you every year for input consideration, et cetera, just so that you know what we're using to make predictions, what we may know at this time or may not know at this time. And so, I'll begin with revenue assumptions. Being conservative in our variables, we'll be using a 4.5% for the next couple of years and then down to 4% on property valuation increase. We have a long-term average increase of right around 5%. This last year, it was 4.57. And so, just being conservative here, if there's more growth, that certainly helps spread out the tax levy to more property. You see that when you see an increase or decrease in mill rate as well. So, if nothing else changed and property value grew, the mill rate per thousand would go down because there's more property to spread out that tax levy over. So, this is a conservative estimate on equalized property valuation growth over the next five years, followed by the revenue limit. It is currently in statute to increase 325 per year, per pupil for the next 400 years. Until we know what the decisions are at the state level in this next biennium session, I would recommend that we continue to be conservative, using what is in law and not going above that at this time. We often use zero, but because of the veto action of Governor Evers last year and because this is in law, we feel like it would be appropriate to at least use the 325. So, that is in there as a 325 in addition to the current maximum revenue per member, which is on the next line. So, if we add 325 to the 2425 amount per member, we will get $11,889 next year per member as far as our revenue cap. And then, each number forward there in that line of revenue per member is just adding that 325. Whoops, sorry. And again, this message underneath here just has to do with the fact that we don't really know what they're going to do at the state level in regards to funding public education in Wisconsin. The per pupil categorical aid of 742, this is not an additional amount every year. It's a flat amount. And so, I'm just letting you know that the plan would be to forecast that that's not going to change at this time. It would remain at 742 per member. A reminder that that is outside of the revenue limit formula, and it has been unchanged since the 1920 fiscal year. So, because we've seen that for the last many years, the recommendation would be just to continue that until, again, we hear different from Madison. And federal and state grants, as far as revenue awards, are monitored annually and they can change. And so, we'll just keep an eye on those. I don't have a prediction on what to use at this time. We would normally just keep it flat and then change it as we go forward, up or down. As far as levy assumptions for revenue, an estimate for Fund 10, without a positive result, April 1st would be approximately $11.3 million. With a positive result after the April 1st referendum would be about $15.1 million. So, I will be modeling with and without, not knowing how that will come out in April and so that we can be studying the effects of both with and without and decisions that will have to be made around that. The Fund 39 debt service levy, what is listed here was prepared with the existing schedule and not with the addition of what is presented and approved this evening with the sale of the bonds. And so, that debt schedule that is included in the materials tonight, which is included in the final resolution for the sale of the bonds, will be added to the debt schedule annually on the levy. We do, we are required to levy at least the principal interest due to cover those repayments each year under the Fund 39 portion of the levy. So, again, that's why there's an asterisk there. That's the existing schedule after this evening's consent on the new debt that will increase based on that new debt schedule. And then, being conservative again on the Fund 80 Community Service, did levy the $200,000. And just the current recommendation is to continue that as a stable levy. We did increase programming this past year, supported by the $200,000 levy. So, as we continue to develop that relationship with our Boys and Girls Club and programming that they offer to support students in the community, we will take a look at that. But for the purposes of forecasting, I will plan to leave it at the $200,000 per year. All of these levies make up the total levy that you certify at the end of October each year. For special education reimbursement, 33.3% was put into law two years ago, conservatively keeping it at that. I really do hope that all the efforts and advocacy to increase special education reimbursement of state-eligible expenses does go up. I also know that we will already be prorated for this current fiscal year below that 33.3% because there isn't enough money allocated to cover all the costs that districts are experiencing in special education. And so, I would not recommend that we go any higher if they could make that a some sufficient allocation, which means some certain is when the pot of money is designated. And then, often it exceeds what's designated. And so, the proration, there's a proration on the reimbursement. And if they would make it some sufficient, then if they say 33%, whatever Holman's expenses that are eligible, we would be reimbursed at 33% without proration. So, we'll keep an eye on that and continue to help advocate for an increase there. And that also, then, you know, impacts the general fund spending as well on the per pupil because we do have that large transfer every year. So, any movement upward in special education reimbursement is certainly favorable, but conservatively estimated at 33.3%. I wanted to give you a little context in that after almost 20 years in school finance, this, this measure, this doesn't really change a whole lot. So, I went back to 2009-10, and the reimbursement was 27.85. In 2014-15, it was 26.79. Then, it dropped in 1920 to 2502. And then, it went up to 29.61 in 2122. And then, last year, it was 32.4. So, even last year, it was lower than what was approved in this last session. So, my recommendation is to be conservative until we know more and that goes up. Next, I'm going to move on to some head count versus membership information. As you know, the revenue limit is a three-year average membership multiplied by the allowable revenue per member. And then, if you do have any local exceptions through voter-approved referendum, those sorts of things come on top of it. But I like to just point out head count first and actuals versus projections. So, the far right, five years is the projections. And then, on the left is the actuals, including this current year. And this is September fall enrollment. So, if you look at this column kind of right in the center of the screen at 3,791, that was our head count on 3rd Friday, September 2024. And then, using like a cohort survival method, so migrating from one grade to the next, that's how we use, do our projections out five years. This column in the middle that says yes, it just is helpful. We can alter these, but do we want to use cohort survival? Yes. How much do we want to wait prior years? We're careful and look at that a lot, especially during our COVID years where we had different enrollment. And how much weight do you want to attribute that to future forecasting and projections? And you can see in the middle, based on using all five years of history, the cohort survival to the next grade level. And they are all over 100% there. That very top one has to do with 4K to kindergarten at 132%. We know that we gain from 4K to kindergarten. 4K is nearly impossible to predict, I think, sometimes. But we always see that gain from 4K to kindergarten. So, that's why that one looks a little different than the rest of them. But other than that, they're over the 100%. It does still predict a slow enrollment decline as those lower grade levels do have less students in them. And as they migrate through to the higher grade levels, you see that decline down here at the, at the bottom as a percentage change year over year. That is head count. So, that is students in seats in September on that count date. And this is just some history for you to see. And it's history plus projection. So, if we go back to the 2019-20, it's just a graphical format of the previous chart. And you can kind of see the most important area is that light teal grades 1 through 5 and the decline of that, those elementary total head count in the elementary schools. So, in 2019-20, we had 1,420 students K5. And this last fall, 1,283. So, that's just a graphical format of the previous information. And then, we move on to memberships. So, membership is different than head count. Membership is what's used with the revenue limit formula, and it is a three-year average. And to calculate membership, we take the summary of those physically present. We subtract the non-residents. We subtract any specific resident reductions. We add back any residents that were open and enrolled elsewhere. And then, there's a multiplier. So, early childhood is .5, 4K is .6, and all K through 12 is 1.0. So, we come up with a number that is different than that students in seats count for the purposes of calculating revenue limit and aid. Regardless, you can still see that the FTE for the three-year average membership, both historically and projection, is on a downward trend. And that does impact our annual revenue under the revenue limit cap. Just again, to remind you, I will run forecasts with and without the 3.85 million operational referendum as incoming revenue beginning next year. If it does pass, what was that, what will that look like for the next five years? And if it doesn't, what decisions do we need to make around the loss of revenue? Any questions on revenue before I move to expenditures?
I don't think so.
Okay. So, the Consumer Price Index urban rate for July 1st, 2025 was published two weeks ago or so at 2.95%. As stated in the issue paper in here, it is used in the forecasting model. It would apply to those groups that bargain in the School District of Holman. That is our Holman Education Association, our teachers' union. That is the only union we have in the School District of Holman. Historically, we have applied similar percentages in the base wages to other groups as well. But just as a reminder, that is the up-to-negotiable percentage. It does not mean that that is what we are negotiating. We have not entered those conversations yet. So, for the purposes of this, it's for forecasting only, followed by 2.5%. We also look at substitute staff. This is payroll. This isn't contracted services. Most of our substitutes are contracted through teachers-on-call for all teachers and EA's, educational assistants. So, this is only pertaining to the substitute staff projected increase in forecasting of those that we are hiring direct and paying through payroll. So, custodians, food service, administrative assistants, drivers, not teachers and educational assistants. The Social Security Medicare, FICA, has been 7.65% since I started this business. So, we're just going to assume it's going to stay there for now until we hear differently. The Wisconsin retirement system did go up from 6.9 to 6.95 in January this month. And so, holding that flat, they designate that amount every year, and that is a percentage of wage. Oops, so for health insurance, looking at a 3% increase. We did migrate to self-insured this year, monitoring that and meeting with the Insurance Center monthly to see how we are progressing through that. And we really hope that we are trending well. We won't know that for a little while yet as we get the claims in and the experience in since July 1st. And it is our expectation that we will come in lower than trend for health insurance increases. And so, we're using 3% here in the model. And then, dental insurance continues to increase, so using a flat 5 in the five-year forecast for dental premium increases. So, this top item does have to do with the contracted teachers-on-call, teacher and substitutes. So, we have a dollar amount we pay the teacher sub. And we look at comparisons across our neighboring districts because we're all kind of competing for the same teacher-substitute pool. And so, I put in a placeholder of 3% trying to keep consistent. But we do look at that annually, and we ask our neighbors, what do you pay in your substitute teachers? And we try to stay competitive. That contract itself can also be impacted on the teachers-on-call contracted costs. So, if they have increased costs outside of what we're paying on a daily rate of pay, that might exceed maybe what we're giving our staff for an increase. So, that's why this says 3%. They have other overhead costs for having those individuals as their employees. And so, sometimes we see a different rate there. For the regular open enrollment transfer out, so the funds that we have to transfer to other districts, so resident students that attend and open enroll out, we have that expense every year, and it's a per pupil expense. The projection here, the eight, the first column is actually current year. So, it's estimated that the cost this year will be $8,962 per pupil. And so, within the forecast, applying the same methodology as 325 on the revenue limit formula, 325 increase in the open enrollment out expenditure. Same thing for special education open enrollment transfer. This year, it is $13,814 for a full-time special education open enrollment out student. So, applying that same 325. And then, also for the voucher exemption, so the private school and special needs exemption, which is levied for each year in the School District of Holman to recoup those dollars. But that is the estimated expense for the different levels of voucher exemption for private school and special needs. Also, with increments of the 325 on the increase per. That's been applied that way because that's kind of what it was this year. Last year, the vouchers went up quite a bit more than the open enrollment transfer for public education. But this year, it's pretty much 325 consistent, so. Next is utility assumptions, which are pretty tricky because we live in Wisconsin. So, weather fluctuates and we don't necessarily know what the increases in these things will. But we, but we put something in there because it can fluctuate. So, we want to kind of see what, what's the impact. But I would like to specifically point out that we do anticipate some savings. It'll be probably another year before we see them. But we are buying chillers and boilers right now with our capital improvement referendums and replacing some really. and replacing some really, really old large equipment. Um, and should see some greater efficiencies that way, once these projects are all said and done. And so, um, it'll be nice to see that come through the facilities budget, to see how that changes as we move forward with more efficient equipment. As far as, um, insurances for risk management, so liability, cyber property and workers' compensation. Again, we're unsure of this. We don't know how, you know, um, the fires in California will impact our property renewal. But sometimes nationwide catastrophic events, hurricanes in the south, can impact the carriers throughout the entire nation. And, and we don't know what that will look like. We do, uh, look at those rates every single year. We renew on July 1st. And we go out and get quotes through the Insurance Center and our agent Derrick Peterson helps with all of that. As far as district property specifically, uh, I do have a 3% in there and 3%. And that's more based on the increase in our asset value because of the property growing in asset value with in addition to the middle school, in addition to Evergreen, and the dollars that we are putting into deferred maintenance and upgrading through remodel. So the value of the buildings themselves will impact, um, the cost of the appropriate insurance to cover that value. So that's why I have 3% in the next couple of years under district property. It could be more if, if it's a significant change. I will certainly bring that back to your attention. Any questions on expenditure variables for forecasting?
No questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, moving on to item 9.4. Executive Director of Instructional Services, Kim Edwards. And elementary school, summer school administrator Sue Island will present the elementary summer school report for approval on the February 10th consent agenda.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so we're looking back, reflecting on this last summer's, um, summer program at the elementary level. We did have, um, summer school held at Evergreen this past year. Um, and the different focus areas, we wanted to close the gaps. So we had some reading and math review. And of course, ready, set, let's learn is for those incoming kindergarten students to get them used to the expectations, um, of school. Um, and then in addition, we had some enrichment classes offered. I did list the classes over on the far right under enrichment. So you get an idea of what types of classes were, were offered. We had a good variety from art to social skills, STEAM, um, some geography. Um, and then I know, uh, um, the music one was, was popular as well. So, um, a lot of fun enrichment classes for the kids. And looking back at the participation, we did have 434 students enrolled at elementary summer school. There were 22 teachers, 14 EAs, a school nurse, administrative assistant and an administrator. And again, you can see in parentheses there, there were some additional supports as well for some of these categories. We really had wonderful substitutes when needed, um, and volunteers as well. And then we just always have to be collaborating with other departments in the district. And so we really appreciated working with nutrition services, transportation, the IT staff, district office, and of course, school board. Um, we appreciate all of your support. So thanks for being part of our team for summer school. These are just a few photos that we took, um, during our 14-day timeframe. So, uh, we had a lot of pictures of the, um, what, there was a second grade group that went over to an assisted living facility and, um, did reading and blew bubbles and that sort of thing. So we had lots of community involvement. They, I think they really looked forward to us coming over, but we really got out a lot of, out of it as well. So it was a really neat class to offer, that social emotional learning piece. So that was last summer. So looking ahead to this upcoming summer, um, as you know, we rotate which elementary school that we hold summer school at. So next year will be, or this upcoming year will be at Prairie View. And we're looking at the same timeframe, so July 7th to the 24th, again, 14 half-days in the morning. Once again, we will have ready, set, let's learn for our incoming kindergarten students. And for them, I know in the past there've been some questions about, well, why can't they, um, select enrichment classes? We do have enrichment activities involved included right as part of their morning. So, um, the, the teachers, and we usually have one per elementary building. So there'll be four sections of ready, set, let's learn. Those teachers will work together and determine also some activities that those, those kids are going to get as well. That will be enrichment. And for grades one through five, we're really going to put a big focus this year on, um, enrichment. So again, we're looking for a variety of classes. And, um, just the, the photos there are just some examples of things we've had and things we hope to continue. And, uh, we're looking forward to what proposals might come forward from our, um, staff.
So then, excuse me, in addition to that, this year we are going to be, um, doing some additional reading support over the summer. This would be in accordance with the requirements of Act 20. Um, we are looking at having two separate three-week sessions, uh, one prior to the regular summer school and one following that. Um, so that students who are invited to participate, um, in this additional reading support would be able to participate in the regular summer school as well. We also know that a lot of our students attend the BGC over the summer. So we're very excited, um, to share that our plan is to partner with the BGC. So we will be going where the students are. So, um, we would bring our tutors or our, our teachers who are reading interventionists over to the BGC to offer those sessions, um, during the morning hours. And then students would then return to their, um, BGC programming. It is not limited to students who are members of the BGC or participating this summer. So, um, students would be able to come in for their individual, uh, or for their small group reading sessions as well. So we will have those, um, the list of students who would qualify then for that based on or following our, our spring assessment window and diagnostics and all, all of those pieces and the, the personal reading plans. So we will have, we'll also be, um, uh, looking to hire as many staff as we possibly can internally for our, our reading support teachers so that we can really support those reading plans. But we will also look to, um, hire externally as well if need be. We'll have those, um, numbers in place and then we'll look, we will start with those that we are required by Act 20 to offer services to. And then we will continue to support as many students as possible based on the staffing that we do get.
And then of course, um, just as middle school and high school presented earlier for summer school, there are some additional opportunities for students who are multilingual learners. So, um, there is a program, um, called Summer Adventures for those students. And then also, um, students that are eligible also, um, are able to participate in extended school year services. So, um, that depends on their case manager and the conversations with student services. So, um, those are just a few additional things that are available this summer. So it kind of includes everyone.
Lots going on this summer.
There's a lot going on, so.
Any questions? Any questions?
Yeah, um, so you mentioned that, uh, um, the reading intervention program will take place at the BGC, which is really cool. Is that in coordination with the Sale to Success Program funded out of?
Separate.
Okay. So, okay.
So they would still have those pieces as well. So this would be, um, specifically staff that come, are hired through us that will come over to provide the interventions.
Cool. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to item 9.5. Executive Director of Student Services, Jill Mason will present speech and language contract services for approval on tonight's consent agenda.
All right, good evening. Um, well, as all of you know, we had, um, a staff member pass away at Sand Lake Elementary. She was our speech and language pathologist. And so, um, you've heard me here before, it's a very hard position to fill. And so we found a creative way to, um, fill, um, those services. So, um, a couple of things. We have tried really hard to find someone to come in person, um, to provide those services. We are unable to find an individual to do that. So we are going to be contracting with presence. It is an online, or it's a virtual option, um, for students to receive speech and language therapy. We will have a staff member take, go get the student, bring the student to the services, be with the student in the services, and then take the student back. Um, so that's how we'll work that, um, the actual speech and language services. And then for evaluations, it's very hard to do that online. And so we would like to contract with Dana Gullicksruh. Um, she's contracted with us before, and she could provide just the evaluations for our students. That way they're in person. We can get some good data for, um, hopefully the, the next person coming in next year.
Questions on that? All right, any questions?
So just to clarify, we plan to repost the position, maybe try again in the fall to see if.
We'll, we'll, actually it's posted now for the fall.
Oh, okay.
It's really hard mid-year and not many people will leave their positions.
Sure.
Um, and most of the retired contracting contractors have actually said, we're, we're done. We're not going to, we've already retired, we've already worked again, and now we're done. So we were really fortunate that Dana is willing to come back and do our evals for us, but.
And if for any reason we weren't able to find one for the fall, is this presence something that you guys feel is like a sustainable solution moving forward?
It's sustainable. I would prefer to have a person, a provider here to do that. So that will be our goal.
Sure.
All right, any questions? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. This will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved.
Motion by Barb?
I will second.
Second by Chris. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And tonight we'll start with Kadisha.
Yeah, I don't have a lot tonight, um, but I will say that, um, I had the pleasure of attending the statewide education conference. And, um, in the same vein of talking about how we are trying to fund special education, one thing that I took away from that conference is that advocacy, uh, with your local representatives is very important when it comes to school funding. Um, so I appreciate the work that WASB does. Um, and I appreciate them giving us that learning opportunity and encourage folks, if that is something they're passionate about, to reach out to their local representatives and help us advocate.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Uh, similar vein, uh, yeah. Attended the, the state educational convention with the rest of the board members last week and some of the staff you heard from tonight. Always a great opportunity to learn, see what other districts are doing, how they're succeeding, what struggles they're going through. Um, I always come back with the perspective of we are doing a really great job here in Holman with a lot of things that we're trying to tackle. So, um, I appreciate the opportunity that the district provides me to go over that and learn and develop as a school board member. So thank you.
Oh, yes, Bridget.
I mean, everything that Kadisha and Chris just said. Um, I also did want to put a little shout out to our booster club. Um, since our last meeting, I had the pleasure of volunteering in one of our concession stands. And it is unbelievable the amount of volunteer hours that that booster club puts into really supporting all of our extracurricular activities. And I just want them to know how appreciative, um, we are of that service that they provide our district. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Barb?
I also echo what was said about the state school board education conference. It's always, um, neat to attend a presentation. And then I can walk out saying, we already do that here in Holman. So, um, it still took a lot. I think that will assist us in our referendum going forward. Um, also, um, there was a finance committee meeting tonight. Julie provided an update on where our operational referendum, um, stands and what progress we're making towards that. And the committee also reviewed 11 policies to be brought to the board.
All right, thank you. Keven?
Okay, I wanted to start off by saying that semester two has started. New classes, new lunches, all this kind of stuff. And that this week there's dress-up days. So today was pajama day. Tomorrow is Adam Sandler Day. Wednesday is a twin day, and there's also a movie at 7:00 PM in the Commons. Thursday's flannel day, and Friday is snow day slash whiteout. Um, and this is for the Winterfest dance, which is, is 31st of January at 7:00 PM. Um, there's a homework survey sound students to address, you know, homework in the new schedule. Show choir, they've been doing pretty good. They're going to Sparta's, uh, burst of adrenaline competition this weekend alongside the middle school show choir. It is at the Meadowview, uh, middle school. 9:00 AM is the middle school, and then 2:15 is the high school show choir. They have four more competitions this season. And then also Emily Gang got best soloist at the On Alaska competition. Pretty good. And then also for seniors, that's scholarships. Um, going through the school, they were due last Friday, but you can still look, you still apply for your colleges. Just search up random stuff. If you don't want to actually do too much, search for no essay or like all those other kind of stuff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I would like to thank Modern Crane for preparing a steel beam for the home and middle school edition that all middle school staff and students were able to sign and solidify becoming a part of that middle school's history. So I thought that was really, really cool. And then in recognition of, uh, National School Counseling Week, um, coming up on the week of February 3rd, I'd like to thank all the school counselors in the School District of Holman for all that they do for our students. And then I also attended the state education convention. Dr. Mueller and I were on a session panel titled Building Bridges, Strengthening Board Superintendent Bonds. And this session focused on effective board superintendent relationships. And that went really, really well, and we got lots of positive feedback. Um, I attended many other sessions. I thought the sessions this year were, um, really good. I took, I took away a lot of things, um, this year. Um, and I want to thank Lindsay Need for representing the Holman School Board at this year's delegate assembly. Um, and all the board members for taking time away from their jobs and their families to learn together as a team. So as we say in Holman, we are better together. So, so that's all I have. Tonight we, oh, no, one more thing. So we, uh, our upcoming board meeting schedule, on February 5th, we have a wellness committee meeting at 3:45 PM. On February 10th, we have a DEI committee meeting at 5:00 PM, followed by a board meeting at 7:00 PM. On February 24th, we have a regular board meeting at 7:00 PM. And then on March 5th, we have a policy committee meeting at 5:00 PM. So tonight we are moving into closed session. So I'm going to ask Vice President Chris Lau to read the motion to move to closed session.
Sure, thank you. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby moves to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1, Subsection C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. In this case, district administrators' evaluation.
All right, Chris Lau has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kadisha has second. To move to closed session, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I ask Chris Lau to take a roll call vote.
All right. Kadisha Islam?
Yes.
Chris Lau, yes. Lindsay Need is absent, Maggie Smith is absent. Bridget Todd Robbins?
Yes.
Barb Wench?
Yes.
Does Keven get to vote?
No.
Okay. And then Jennifer Deek?
Yes.
Okay, we are now moving to closed session.